Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors meeting to order for December 14th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. A lot going on. I'm going to try to keep everything in order here. So first, we're going to start with the announcements with J.C.
Thank you, Fran. The Township Leaf Collection Program concluded on December 8th. Many thanks to the Public Works employees for their efforts to keep the streets clear of leaves. Please remember to bag your leaves and place with your yard waste on Mondays from here on out. The White Marsh Art Center will host an art exhibition and sale tomorrow, Friday, December 15th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Cedar Grove Park. And as this is our last meeting of 2023, the Board of Supervisors would like to wish everyone a safe, happy, and healthy holiday season.
Thank you, J.C. All right. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from November 9th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1033 to allow the purchase of real property located at 534 South Bethlehem Pike with the use of FEMA hazardous mitigation grant funds in the amount of $330,155 and 40 cents?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Miller.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McInally.
Good evening. In front of you is an ordinance, as you said, to use FEMA money to purchase the property at 534 South Bethlehem Pike. The purchase price of the property is $245,000. The grant is $330,155 and 40 cents. We will use the remaining money to demolish the house and bring it back to just regular land. We will not be able to use that to build anything on that land just to bring it back to the natural state. So I'm asking for recommendation to approve the ordinance for the purchase of the land using FEMA money.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? Our hearing none. Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Mr. Eene?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Ordinance carries. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1034 in accordance with Act 172 to grant township real estate tax credits to active volunteer firefighters who serve in one of the two volunteer fire departments for which they own and reside as their primary residence in White Marsh Township?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McInally?
Yes.
Let's see what's going on.
Get used to saying that.
See what's going on.
Sent ordinance to comply with Act 172. It was a request by the Emergency Services Board to give a real estate tax credit to the volunteer fire companies for anyone that owns land in White Marsh Township and serves on either one of the fire department as a volunteer. There'll be standards that they have to hit by the end of the year, and once they hit that, they will have 100% of the township real estate tax credited for their response. That's about it. Total cost of the township appears to be about $23,000 for roughly 51 volunteers.
All right, thank you. I think this is a great way to help attract and retain our volunteers in the fire department, and this was recommended by the Emergency Services Board. So any other board comment? Any public comment? Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1035 fixing the tax millage at 2.3633 for all real property within White Marsh Township for the year 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. It'll be 2024. We're going to keep that tax rate there for 20... I had to throw you off one more time.
That's done on purpose.
Yes. So we have, as you mentioned, the good news here is that the tax millage will remain the same from 2023 to 2024. We did adjust the general fund and park and rec funds, so those millages have been adjusted. It doesn't impact the bottom millage rate. This was something we discussed during the budget process, and it allows all costs to be covered in the park and rec budget without doing a transfer at the end of each year. So in the end, the good news again is that the tax millage for 2024 will be 2.3633.
Thank you. Any board comment? Public comment? Hearing none. Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-27 authorizing the 2023 budget amendments?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. We're going to start to go through our budget approvals for 2023 and 2024. We're starting in 2023. This is a transfer to our capital equipment reserve fund. This is something that was started about 10 years ago when we were looking at ways in which we could help defer the cost of some of the larger equipment that you see on the streets for such things as leaf collection and snow removal. It has really been something that has allowed our Public Works Department the ability to purchase some of those vehicles moving forward and have money there and not trying to come up with it when needed. So this has really been basically a depreciation fund for the township. So, long story short, this is the transfer from the general fund to the capital equipment reserve fund in the amount of $50,000.
All right, thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Resolution carries. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-28 authorizing the 2023 inter-fund balance transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. Again, this is for 2023. We have several areas where we have to transfer some budgetary funds, inter-fund transfers. They are $800,000 into the capital fund, into the park and rec fund, $130,919, and then in the capital equipment reserve fund, $120,000. That is something that we do on an annual basis. It's approved in the budget the year before, but these are all the transfers, and the board approves them by resolution each year.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? Mr. Miller, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Resolution carries, rather. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-29 approving the 2024 minimum municipal obligation for the police and non-uniform pension plans in the combined amount of $943,099?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. You might be wondering why we're doing this in December. We generally do this and are required to do this in September. The reason being, as we looked and we did our 2024 MMO, it was for the full amount for that 1.4 million when we did it in September. As we were looking at ways in which we would close the budget deficit, one of the several ways in which we have done that was with the smoothing option to our MMO, minimum municipal obligation, in particular to the police MMO. It doesn't do anything in terms of their pension or anything along those lines, but what it does is, since we had some difficult years in 2019 in our returns from our investments, it allows us to smooth the losses over several years. In doing so, it reduces our MMO for next year. The police MMO goes from about 1.2 million to $654,936,000. So that will allow for a little less ebbs and flows. It will kind of smooth it over the next several years that you will still have to pay for the MMO, but it won't be as drastic as a one-year hit due to the valuation and the losses from 20... I'm sorry, 2021, not 2019, 2021. So with that, this is one of the mechanisms that we used in order to help offset the deficit that we had in the 2024 budget. Therefore, what we are asking the board is to approve the new MMO in the amount of $943,099.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-30 authorizing and operating in capital plan budget for 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
I'm going to turn it over now to our finance director, Mr. Barron.
Very good.
Charlie, could you...
Yep, yep, I'm on it.
I have to turn it on the mic?
I'm on it, I'm on it. Okay. Good evening. It's my honor and pleasure to present the 2024 work budget, which is now the final budget, as we discussed this through the months. God, I'm going to miss this. You sent me off, that is a charm. I might have to steal Charlie as my IT guru.
Take your time.
No problem. We have all night, right? Just to go over some dates, we started this budget, presented the budget to the board on September 28th. October 9th and 16th, we had budget workshops with the department heads and the ancillary groups. November 9th, we approved a preliminary budget, and here we are today to approve the final budget. So, right now... Now you put it on sensitive mode, then it's your turn. All right, total revenues for 2024 are going to be $21,150,000, 112. Total expenditures, $21,150,000, 112. So as you can see, it's a balanced budget. This makes up some of the revenues, the real property, taxes, transfer tax, income tax. All the numbers you can see equal $21,150,000. For the people that don't like numbers, here's a beautiful graph. Shows you where majority of the money is coming from. Earned income tax, real estate tax, fund balance, real estate and business tax. You look at that percentages, so about 75% and 80% of your budget and your revenues is them columns. Expenditures, these are broken out by the departments. As you can see, the total budget is $21,150,000, 112. Those that don't like numbers and like graphs, here it is in a pie graph, same thing. It shows your departments, a big part of our pie, police department, public works, public relations, employee benefits. One big part of the positive of this budget is the real estate taxes. At this point, as of today, we are $128,000 above where we were last year collecting the real estate taxes, and we still have two more weeks left. Merkeimer did send a letter out to all the people who had not paid to remind them, hey, you haven't paid. Trust me, my phone's been ringing off the wall saying, hey, I never got my bill, whatever, and we were helping the residents out and get their bill. Earned income tax revenue at this time is $350,000 above last year's time point at this point. Business taxes up $264,000. Real estate transfer tax, as of this month, we still have Decembers to collect. We are $269,000 above last year. Building permits and electric permits are above previous years. Health insurance cost has been kept stable, a little short, slow increase. The MMO that Rick talked about is saving us $547,000 by doing the smoothing. It was kind of a no-brainer for us to look at it. Hopefully, the market does better in the years to come, and it'll take care of that money that we lost back in 2021. Reserve funds are still there to balance the budget, and again, two years ago, we started using liquid fuels funds to do some things through the highway and public works department. It's the real estate transfer tax. You can see, right now, we're at 1.2 million where we were last year, and that's, you can see it going up and down based on some of the sales in the properties in the township. It's the average increase of the assessments. As of the budget, getting ready for the meeting, the assessment's going down next year. I will get an update probably someday, this is probably tomorrow or next week, on the assessment that will be billed. That changes monthly as people sell their houses, as people do additions, something happens to their house or whatever, place is being demolished. So that goes up, you can see up and down. You can see $1,915,000 to start 2023. It was $1,910,000 when I did this presentation, get it ready. General fund debt is consistently the number that it's been, $1,020,000 for this year, and then had 24, I'm sorry, it was $1,022,000 this year. Mill rates. I started looking at this when we started budget, and I wanted to put this slide in here to show the mill rates for the local area townships. As you can see, White Marsh is the lowest. When I started this, I wasn't sure of that, I didn't know. So I put this together, because as you can see, we're at 2.3633, and we are not increasing it. Plymouth's all the way up, so you can see Ambler's is 8.8. So it was just something that I always... People say, oh, you raise taxes. We haven't raised taxes here in many years. Other parts of the taxes have gone up, but not White Marsh Township tax, so... This is another chart or graph I'd like to show. This is the total tax graph for all, for the resident. The resident median assessed value is $171,000. That means a normal real estate tax would be about $5,400. 78.94% is the school district. 1.23% is Montgomery County Community College, 12% is Montgomery County College, and White Marsh Township is 7.46%. So a people's taxes, 7.46, 7.5, and one around it is the taxes comes here to the township. And on behalf of the staff, I'd like to thank Laura and Rick for all that you've done for White Marsh Township. All the staff couldn't be here, but a lot of the directors are here, and we'd like to thank Laura for all your eight years here, and Rick for the last 11 years. It's been great. I've been here three, it's been great working with you, and thank you for offering me the job many years ago. And happy holidays to everybody.
Thanks, Kevin. The applause was for balancing the budget. Wasn't for them yet. We'll get to that. But thank you very much. Any board comment? Any public comment?
Good evening. Sedel Zove, Harts Ridge Road. The slides flashed a little too quickly for me to catch it, but when I reviewed the packet and the budget documents in the packet for tonight's meeting, I noticed under expense budget, a line item labeled legislative for $21,750. Can you explain what that is? Because I don't remember seeing it before.
Kevin's going to come up and...
So to see five people in front of you right there, that's your legislative group. Okay, that's their pay that they make, so millions of dollars. But it's also economic... The environmental budget and the shade tree budget is in the legislative budget, because it's not really a department, so that's what's in there. That's what makes up that whole...
I take your word for it.
$21,000.
Any other public comment? Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Resolution carries. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-31 authorizing the 2024 refuse fee of $412 per residential dwelling unit for the collection and disposal of trash, recycling, and yard waste?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
There is no increase this year in the trash fee.
Thank you. Any board comment?
Yay.
Any public comment? Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-32 authorizing the 2024 streetlight fee at $38 per dwelling unit and fire hydrant fee at $21 per dwelling unit?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
There is no increase to either of these fees in 2024.
Okay. Mr. McInally, when we do this next year, just tell me what to say so I don't have to go... Any board comment? Public comment? Mr. Miller, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Resolution carries. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-33 authorizing the 2024 fee schedule, which will take effect on January 1st, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair McCusker. Each year, we ask our departments to look at the fee schedule for the upcoming year. They do a review based on other municipalities or costs that are increasing. Your large ones that do have adjustments are park and recreation, which should be no surprise as they have different activities and different costs on an annual basis. There are some others. I believe the police had some towing fees that had to be increased, amongst some others that the departments provided, and they provided cover memos outlining those. We're happy to answer any of those questions. Again, nominal fee increases that we have to do, but what this allows the township is to put those fees in place for January 1 of the following year, in this case, 2024. We do this by resolution each year, and the fee schedule is before you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do you have any board comment? Any public comment? Mr. Miller, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 2023-34 authorizing acting township manager to sign all associated documents at closing for 7111 Sheaf Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
This is naming acting manager Craig McInally so that he is authorized by the board to sign in the closing of many, many, many documents for the preservation of 7111 Sheaf Lane.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? Mr. Miller, will you please call the roll for your final time as White Marsh Township manager?
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nester?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes, sir.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the agreement of the sale for conservation easement for lots four and four A relating to the property at 7111 Sheaf Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
So we are going to go through several approvals related to the 7111 Sheaf Lane preservation that is needed for settlement before the end of the year. It's actually next Tuesday that there will be settling on the property with the Highlands and some other buyers. As a result, the township has already had an ordinance approved for our purchase price of the conservation easement. We did that last month. Now, these are really administrative documents that we need to have in place in order to settle next week. The first that you read before you is the agreement of sale, and that is for the conservation easement that the township will be purchasing over lots four and four A.
All right, thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the conservation easement for lots four and four A relating to the property at 7111 Sheaf Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
And again, this is for the two lots that the township will be purchasing in conservation easement. This is the actual conservation easement document that the township will have for those two lots.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the conservation easement for lots three and five relating to the property at 7111 Sheaf Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
So lots three and five, the township is not paying for any conservation easement, but as part of the entire property, these two lots, we've agreed with the Highlands that we would be the holder of a conservation easement, no monetary value that is needed for it over both of these lots. This action allows us to, provides us the conservation easement document for lots three and five on the property.
Thank you. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the private road and driveway easement agreement at 7111 Sheaf Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
I mean, we really got into the legal weeds with this whole transaction, and this was a... There is actually a private road and a driveway easement over a portion of this property. So this is approving that easement agreement so that there can be access to 7111 Sheaf Lane.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the termination of the Alter Development Agreement associated with 7111 Sheaf Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
So the name Alter is the original owner of the property. There was agreements that were in place when the development went in and was constructed. This is to approve some of the termination of those agreements to allow for all of these conservation easements, allow for some of the private individuals to purchase some of the parcels there. So this is the termination of the Alter, who was the original owner of his development agreement, to allow this transaction to occur.
All right, thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the escrow release number three for Ashford Wealth Advisors' 515 Germantown Pike in the amount of $57,977.50?
So moved.
Second.
Krista? Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. This is, as you mentioned, for 515 East Germantown Pike in the amount of $57,977.50. And we are recommending that you authorize the release of these monies, after which there would be $92,597.50 remaining.
Good. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the escrow release number 8 for the Oaks at Lafayette Hill Cedar Grove Road in the amount of $348,196.55?
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
This, as you mentioned, is for the Oaks at Lafayette Hill in the amount of $348,196.55. And after this release, there would be $447,764.00 remaining in escrow. And we are recommending that you authorize the release of these monies.
Thanks, Krista. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the escrow release number 8 for River Homes LLC, 901 Washington Street, in the amount of $87,983.50?
So moved. Second.
Krista?
Last one of the night. This is 901 Washington Street, River Place, the townhome development down on the Schuylkill in the Kucha Hakan area. It is in the amount of $87,983.50, after which there would be $1,051,994.51 remaining.
Thanks, Krista. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $2,053,340.77 and payroll totaling $714,109.28 and pension paid costs totaling $3,312.94 for November 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. That'll bring us to the public comment period. Any public comment? Sir? Yeah? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Richard Abraham, 670 Bethlehem Pike in White Marsh Township. As you may remember, was involved with the Friends of Abolition Hall in the preservation of that property. And I recently attended a semi-annual meeting of the Arts Centers Board and was distressed and concerned about what is happening with regard to Abolition Hall. And I'm specifically referring to the grant agreement between the Board of Supervisors. I have a copy dated August 10, 2022. I don't know if that's been finalized, if it's been amended, if it's been fully signed, or exactly what the status is. But I'm primarily concerned about the Arts Center's commitment to preserve Abolition Hall consistent with the terms of this grant agreement, which in section, on page 3, Section 2.1B, specifically says that "The use and operation of Abolition Hall shall be in such a manner to preserve the spirit of its original use, i.e., public gathering and meeting space, and its architectural and historical relevance." And my understanding from attending the meeting is that the Arts Center plans to put in the lower level of Abolition Hall a welding studio, which I don't think is in any way consistent with what this grant agreement speaks of. It seems to me, and I had hoped to be, I was invited to come to a tour of the property at 5:30, which had been postponed apparently because it was dark and the people there felt that it would be too dangerous to have a tour at that time. But I've been invited to come back for another tour, as are, I'm sure, other members of the public. My concern is that there is a mountain and multi-millions of dollars of expenditure that needs to be done for Abolition Hall and the Stone Barn and the Huffington House. And it doesn't seem like, at this stage, anything is really moving along significantly in order to even get an evaluation of what the problems are or what the hazards are or what might need to be done or what the scope is of what might need to be done. And it seems that, from speaking to a couple other people, the, it is a multi-multi-million dollar, multi-year project. And I saw somewhere in notes that the Arts Center intends to try and have classes in the property as early as January of 2024. My question at the Arts Center meeting was, I hope they have multi-multi-millions of dollars of insurance if they're going to start holding classes there in a place that hasn't been renovated and nobody knows what environmental hazards might be there. I'm sure there's lead paint there. I don't have any idea what they actually plan to do or how they're going to conduct classes within a month from now. But one thought I had was that, and this would have to obviously be explored in much more detail. It seems to me that a separate building might need to be constructed, which would be great for a welding studio, a ceramic studio, and something on the property designed, obviously, to be consistent with the other buildings on the property, which would then allow appropriate study of the existing conditions and what needs to be done to renovate and make safe and preserve for the public and for educational purposes and for what the Carabats wanted disadvantaged people, children and schoolchildren to come and learn about Abolition Hall and the Huffington House and the whole property. And it didn't seem to me that the Arts Center really has any significant interest in any preservation of the history or use of this property for schoolchildren or the public in general to learn about this property. And my question is just, what is the role of the board here in seeing that the provisions of the grant agreement are complied with?
Well, I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves with what the Arts Center, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, Laura and J.C., but as far as putting classes and everything, they're way ahead of ourselves. The welding and, I have no idea what that's even about. We are going to make sure that we hold them accountable to the grant agreement. And you have valid concerns, but there's a lot more to come and a lot more to do before we get into all the things that happened probably at that meeting. So I think we're a little bit ahead of things.
And my final concern, I guess, was that one of the comments that Dan, I forgot his last name, the president of the Arts Center, said was, in response to somebody else's comment at the meeting, he said, "Yeah, we know we're in way over our heads." And that just gives me great concern about who is going to see that things get done appropriately in accordance with the grant agreement so that, you know, a welding studio doesn't cause a fire in the building.
I, we totally hear where you're coming from. We have similar concerns. We're on top of it. And we'll make sure, we make sure that they're held accountable to the grant agreement. And we'll make sure it's done right.
And will there be future meetings with the board where this subject will be on the agenda?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Sedell?
Sedell Zove, I too attended that semi-annual membership meeting on Monday night, held in Abolition Hall. And I was present in person. There were other people joining the meeting by Zoom. At your last Board of Supervisors meeting, Dan Zueno, the board president of the Arts Center, spoke and indicated that they had just signed an engagement letter with an architect. I was delighted to hear that. I was even more delighted to hear that the architect they selected was Claire Donato. But between then and now, I've had the opportunity to read the engagement letter and the scope of services and have significant questions about the scope and the initial work plan. In particular, as Richard Abraham has indicated, the scope indicates that the architect will initially come up with a concept plan to put a ceramic studio in the lower level of the Stone Barn and a welding studio on the lower level of Abolition Hall. And that the Huffington House, as it says, to be renovated at a future date. So this scope of service doesn't even address the Huffington House, which is, according to the grant agreement, to be the primary home of the Arts Center. So I'm especially concerned about the fate of the Huffington House. If the Arts Center occupies two spaces, one in the Stone Barn and one in Abolition Hall, what will become of the Huffington House at the corner? The three-story white stucco house that is emblematic of the property, that everybody recognizes as the Corson homestead, as the Huffington House? I too believe that using the lower level of Abolition Hall as a welding studio is inappropriate, particularly if there will be public spaces on the upper level in the hall itself, in the room where Frederick Douglass spoke, where other important abolitionists spoke. To have a welding studio there is totally inconsistent, it seems to me. I didn't have the opportunity to say this at Monday's meeting. I was hoping the architect would be there and I could engage with her, but she was present only via Zoom. I was able to ask one question but did not get a very clear answer. So I too want to express my concern and my plea that this board be far more proactive than it has been in engaging with the Arts Center to ensure adherence to the terms of the details and the spirit of the grant agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Edmund Shin, Lafayette Avenue. First, I just want to thank the Board of Supervisors and the staff, Rick Miller, Charlie, Krista, for all their work at 7111 Sheaf Lane. I'd like to make a special thanks to Mr. Kilkeny's office, Dave Sander, for all their work, because it's been a ton of documents that you've had to get corralled. It is unfathomable how many emails have been exchanged on this topic. It is, it was a very heavy lift, and Dave Sander knocked it out of the park. And I cannot say enough good things about the work that he did to make this deal come to fruition. In hearing about Abolition Hall and speaking with the people who are involved in that, to me, it sounds like they're undercapitalized and they're undergunned for this project. And if the Board of Supervisors were inclined to create an oversight committee to help guide them, I would be happy to volunteer to participate because I think it's a very important project. It was a big win for the township. I think there's a lot of good intentions, and I just think it's an overwhelming project that requires a tremendous amount of money and a tremendous amount of construction know-how and, you know, capital planning, comprehensive planning. And I think that perhaps with some guidance and assistance, this thing can be, get back on the right track. So thank you for everything you guys are doing and happy holidays.
Thanks, Ed. You too.
I have to lower this a little bit after Mr. Shin was here. I'm here primarily to say something nice about Laura. I'm not sure if there's a later session where she gets praised. But before I get to that, unfortunately, Laura, I do have some reflections on Abolition Hall. One is that perhaps a vehicle for the township to, in essence, take control of this is to hire a good planner, not only to look at the capital needs, but also to look at the open space and the interaction with the farm and the 10 acres the township owns, but do a comprehensive scheme for the whole place. And perhaps also bring in a historic consultant to make sure we respect the fabric. But anyway, certainly, I've heard plenty at home about these many frustrations, and I hope you do get together some sort of advisory committee. Original purpose for standing up is that I am wearing my official hat as chair of the Open Space Committee. And Laura has been the liaison for how many years have you put up with us?
Three.
I think it's maybe longer than that. Whatever it is, you've been, you've been very helpful, often quietly and behind the scenes, very diligent. And the role of the liaison is interesting because you're not supposed to be very vocal and speak when behalf of five people. I've seen J.C. go through the same thing in Shade Tree. But Laura, on a number, a number of occasions, you were very helpful in just getting things straightened out. So I appreciate that and your contribution to the open space effort. And you would nudge us sometimes back into the right path when we started to go out of our lane, but in a very diplomatic fashion. So thank you very much, and I hope we see you around the township continuing to serve as a private citizen.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right. That'll bring us to board comments. So it'll be time to praise Laura. So I think I would be remiss without saying a few words about Laura. Got to serve with Laura on the board six years ago. And I must say, I learned a ton from her. I came in, I was a little bit nervous about sitting up here, very nervous about taking over his chair. But Laura conducted herself with so much dignity, respect, and professionalism. And I watched her and I admired her. And she's a true public servant. She truly cares about people, truly. You know, and I always felt that you always truly cared about me as a person. Learned a lot of things from Laura. And that's to be genuine, to be truthful, to care about people first, to do the right things, even when they're really hard to do. And she taught me all that stuff. And that stuff didn't make me good up here. It made me good as a person, good as a man, as a father, as a friend, as a son. And that's a tremendous gift to be able to work with somebody in this capacity and to learn so much about them, where we became more than just colleagues on a board, but tremendous friends. So Laura, I'm going to miss you, but I'm looking forward. You hear, everyone out here needs you. I'm looking forward to what you bring to the township in the future because I think it's going to be some really big things. And we'll be talking about it. So thank you very much. It's been a pleasure serving with you. And best of luck on your next mission in the township, which I think we know what that's going to be. So do you have any other board comment?
Well, I'd like to say a few words, if I might. I really wasn't sure what I was getting into when I ran for supervisor for the first time four years ago. And Laura, when you dragged me to a SEPTA station at 5:00 a.m. on a very cold morning to hand out donuts and flyers to very sleepy commuters, I started to question not only my sanity, but yours. But as I got to know you better during that campaign and then as your colleague on this board, I saw something very remarkable along the lines of what Fran said. What I have seen is a kind, caring, committed, and at times, often tenacious, public servant who has worked tirelessly for our neighbors in White Marsh. I have the greatest respect for you. And I've been proud to call you my colleague over these past four years, but I feel privileged to now call you my friend. We are going to miss your ever-present smile on this board and not to mention your signature sign-off. sign-off, "Good night, White Marsh." And maybe, maybe tonight, you can do it one more time for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll just jump in. Laura, I want to say thank you for welcoming me to the White Marsh community, for welcoming me as a member of the Shade Tree Commission when I started there, and for helping me and welcoming me as a member of this board. I find myself often times asking myself, what would Laura do? Because I think you bring a tremendous amount of thought, preparation, strategy, and as others have said, just kindness and thoughtfulness to the way that you approach things. And I think that it's something that has really benefited the board and benefited the township. I also feel like I can call you a friend, and I appreciate that. I appreciate being able to reach out if I have a question or, you know, want to know how to approach something. Your will be incredibly missed, and your shoes will be big shoes to fill for all of us as we step in. But we really do appreciate you, and you will definitely be missed.
So, I've had the honor of working with you now for four years. I remember when you first ran, I think I met you at a political event, and you were, I didn't know you much then, and I am fortunate to have gotten to know you now and to call you my friend. There's so much that Laura does and shares and cares about, and there's so much behind the scenes that no one has ever seen or will see or know about. I commiserate with everything that everyone has said. I appreciate your listening ear, whether it's professionally or personally. I appreciate that when anybody's going through anything personally, that you make sure you reach out and check in. Your kindness, your concern, your care has always been first and foremost and genuine for all of us, for the staff, and for the township. And I will miss you greatly, and I'm grateful for having served with you, and I'm grateful for your friendship. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Laura.
Before we, before we move on from Laura, I'd just like to read a couple citations from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania House of Representatives citation. Whereas the Pennsylvania House of Representatives is always proud to recognize those individuals who through diligence and determination have contributed greatly to their communities. And whereas Ms. Laura Boyle-Nester has served as a White Marsh Township Supervisor since January 1st, 2016, and as Chair of the Board of Supervisors during the years of 2020, 2021, and 2022. And whereas Ms. Laura Boyle-Nester serves as the Board of Supervisors Liaison to the Historical Architectural Review Board and was essential in the project to preserve White Marsh's Abolition Hall, a stop on the Underground Railroad. And whereas Ms. Laura Boyle-Nester is a leader in environmental conservation who served as the Board of Supervisors Liaison to the Parks and Recreation Board, Environmental Advisory Board, and Open Space Committee. And whereas Ms. Laura Boyle-Nester is retiring from exemplary and impassioned service as a supervisor of White Marsh Township, which bettered the community. Now therefore being resolved that the Pennsylvania House of Representatives congratulates Ms. Laura Boyle-Nester on her extensive and important work for White Marsh Township, and directs that a copy of this citation, sponsored by Representative Mary Jo Daly, be transmitted to the Ms. Laura Boyle-Nester on Thursday, December 14th, 2023. This one's from P-Sats. This certificate of service is hereby presented to Laura Boyle-Nester. In recognition of your eight years of service as a township supervisor for White Marsh Township Montgomery County, we commend you for your selfless dedication to your community and local government, as well as your leadership, commitment, and passion for serving your fellow citizens. Presented by the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors, December 14th, 2023. And finally, we've made a donation to Rose Bridge Farm and Sanctuary in the name of Laura Boyle-Nester as a thank you for her eight years of dedicated service as a member of the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors. Can you give her?
And on behalf of us as board members, this is our appreciation.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
I'm keeping it together. I'm keeping it together.
Yeah, you really did.
You humble me, and I know you like a fast meeting, Fran, but I do have comments. Wow, I'm, I'm speechless to what you all have said. Truly, I mean, this is the most dedicated group of people I have ever met, and I truly am in awe and humbled by what you said. No, I have to put this down. I am beyond grateful to have had this opportunity. I've worked alongside truly remarkable people who have together done extraordinary things. A special thanks to my previous Board of Supervisors, Michael Drosner, Amy Grossman, Melissa Sterling-Shorts, Bob Hart, and Jim Totten. Special thank you to all my current team, and I'm gonna highlight a few of you. Rick, you have a calm zen that has always been so appreciated. I've been able to talk and ask questions, and you've guided. Your patience, your understanding, there was no stupid question, even though internally you may have thought there was, you never showed it. The township is definitely gonna miss you. I am gonna miss you as a resident. I know you're gonna go on to do great things. Thank you. And I know we'll be in great hands with Craig. Charlie, you have helped me and our residents understand the complexities of zoning and done it in a kind way. And I forever am thankful for that. Whether you're helping someone at the front desk or actually pulling up maps, whether it works well or not, greatly appreciated. Shaun, your team is amazing. You've heard great remarks even tonight. You personally, I thank you deeply. You even took calls while you and your family were in Italy and answered my questions, actually, about Abolition Hall. So, from the beginning. So thank you for your tireless efforts and dedication. Tom, you are the Buzz Lightyear to infinity and beyond with passion to the township's Park and Rec Department. Your, your insight in helping kids, but adults, the community of all ages, I mean, you've received, we've received countless awards because of all that you've done. Thank you.
We are a team.
We are a team. And Jack, all of your dedication with Public Works, I mean, we can't do this without you. And I am forever, forever thankful. Chief Ward in the Police Department, your continued commitment to our safety and also community engagement is, is very appreciated, and I know you'll continue to do, do great things. Krista, your engineering knowledge is incredible. And not only your willingness to literally put on the boots and go out into the field, but you do it kindly, and you literally do put on the boots and go out into the field. So thank you for all that you are doing. All of our other boards, our fire, ambulance, library, all the volunteers that make the countless hours, help the township grow in a positive way. And my colleagues, it may appear up here on the board that we all always agree, but that's not true. We challenge each other, and we push each other, and that's what you want up here, and that's what they are. You guys are amazing. Each of you bring such insight and dedication and openness, and I think that's the great thing about our team, has been a willingness to be honest and challenge each other and ask the questions that are tough. It's what makes the township special. And to my husband Greg here tonight, thank you for your patience as I have served and you're listening, or maybe not always listening ears. But finally and foremost, I thank our residents. I thank you for letting me have this opportunity to serve for two terms. I'm humbled, and I know this team will continue to do the hard work necessary to keep us in this township moving forward for an even brighter future. Thank you so much.
And typical Rick Mellor, Laura's coming off the board, and he hands in his resignation to overshadow the chair. So, Rick, you continue this year to bring me pain, make me look bad. Everything I said about Laura, opposite. No, I'm just kidding. You know, Rick, you do have, like Laura was saying, you do have a very calm demeanor. You're a great leader, there's no doubt about it, and we know you're gonna do great things in the future. It's hard, hard to see you go. You've been, you've been a mentor to me, of course. I mean, we'd get an email, and you said, "Don't send an email until I read it." And then you made a comment that it looks like it was written by a four-year-old before. The only usable portion was the dear to the person. That hurt. But everybody knows you as this calm person, this calm presence, until we bring in Little League. I hope you never do Little League again. But we're really gonna miss you. You did such great things over your 11 years for this township. You've left White Marsh in a better place than where you found it. And a testimony, or testament to a great leader, is when people stay around. Good people stay around. And Laura just pointed out your staff. You have Kevin, Craig, Jack, Tom, Andrew, Chief, you know, among all your other staff. You haven't had turnover, besides the fired marshals. Sue's back there, yeah, Sue. Sue's been here forever. You haven't had turnover. People stay, and you have great staff. And you're leaving us with, with them, and we're in good hands. We know that. You ever need anything, talk to Supervisor Manuel.
It's my neighbor.
That's right. You stay over there on the Springfield side at this, at this point. But Rick, thank you so much for everything you've done. Done for me, done for the township, done for the board. You've been, you know, it's funny to watch, you're like a chameleon with all the different boards you had to work with, and, you know, it's a very difficult job as township manager. I watch, the township manager is the most thankless job I think I've ever seen. You never hear "thank you," because when things are going good, we get the credit, and when things are going bad, it's you. And that's, that's a tough job, but you've handled it with a lot of dignity, and, you know, you're a true professional. So thank you again. So, good luck. That's it.
Can I have the mic?
Well, does anybody else want to say anything about Rick? Or that's enough. That's probably enough.
That's too much. Really, really briefly, what, what you have done, in a nutshell, is taken our vision and turned it into reality. Without you pushing to get things done, they would not have happened. So thank you for that tenacity.
You've supported us every step of the way and been there under some difficult circumstances over the years. You're always calm, you're always collected, even in, you know, difficult situations. And like I said about Laura, you, I know you don't like the spotlight, but there's so much that you have done and will probably continue to do even in your next role that people never see, that you don't get "thank you" for. And I just want to say thank you on my, from, for me and from the board, for all that you've done. And your new employer is very, very lucky to have you.
Go ahead, Rick. It's, it's very humbling, but I'll use the word proud. I'm very proud that I had the opportunity that you all gave me to serve and be appointed in this capacity. Laura, eight of my 11 years, we've been together, we've been together the longest on the board. I've truly told all my colleagues, this is the best board I've ever had. I tell all of them that. And it's not because you make it easy for me, but you challenge me. You want the best for this community. You look and you will listen to the residents that come up here, sometimes, I have to say, ad nauseam, but it's your role. And you all have done it very well. I believe in the council manager form of government that we have here. You also have been tremendously supportive of staff. I can't thank you all enough for that. I'm only as good as them. They make me look good. And our role is to make you every day when you're, and monthly when you're in this, in this boardroom, to look good. And, and that's what I've tried to do. You know, it's no secret, I don't live here, but I went to school here. This is my career, it's my passion. I loved working for White Marsh. It is a great, great community, all the way around, residents, businesses, staff, boards that I've worked for. It really is truly a special place. You were very fortunate to be leading such a special place. And believe me, I talked to a lot of my colleagues, it's not like this in a lot of different places. So you're very fortunate. I just, I can't thank you enough for the opportunity. I'm proud that I've been able to serve you all and this community as their manager. I am going to a different employer, yes. White Marsh will still be a member. I am certainly always available, but one thing I won't be available for that I will not miss, and that is these night meetings. I will not miss them. So I wish you all the best as you move forward. As you said, you have a tremendous staff. Craig McInally's gonna do great things leading it, and I'm excited to see what the future holds for White Marsh. And again, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Rick. We do have a little gift for you. No citations or anything, though.
I don't need the gift, it's unnecessary, but very kind.
This is from all of us on the board, our appreciation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Oh, thanks, Rick.
All right, thank you. All right. Anything else? I think that's it?
I think that covers it.
I'd like to announce that we had an executive meeting where we discussed personnel and litigation, real estate.
Just personnel.
Just personnel. It was that long ago. Just personnel.
He makes you look bad.
He did it again. The subtle way of making it stop.
Doesn't take a whole lot of print.
Impeachment proceedings will be January 3rd. So, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We want her to close.
Turn it over to Laura.
We have to close the meeting.
All, and all, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is closed.
Good night, White Marsh.
Yeah.